Pat Grudy.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, so we have everybody tonight. Our agenda will open up for public comment. Mary, I don't believe there was any unless we got last minute comments.
There was not.
Okay, so no need to do that then. I'll declare the public hearing on the FY21 budget open and ask Dan to do a brief overview of the budget then.
Oh, he said brief. All right. Um, I got some slides ready. Should Sharon one second here?
Daniel Stanley Business.
Shall I make my annual corny joke that Dan puts the fun in fund accounting?
Nice.
No, I'd hold that one actually.
Impressive, actually. All right. Okay, so this is a presentation for the budget hearing. This is similar to what we've had in previous years. I have moved you all to this side, so that's why I keep looking in this direction. This is the date today. So what we're going to look at is our fiscal year tentative budget that's been updated since we last met two weeks ago, and then we'll talk about the next steps. So now our tentative budget, just to clarify, the budget is an estimate of income and expenditures and boy, if there's ever a year that this is much more of an estimate than ever before. So but I think we all know that and understand that. So we can move on. We can, there we go. Whoop, little far. All right. So the changes since two weeks ago, that's reflected in the numbers that I'm about to show you. So interest income, so we dropped that 300,000 to about 700,000. So that's reflected there based on the conversation that we had last time. It's really 670,000 is where we're at right now for interest income. Food service was brought down 400,000 to 600,000, again, based on our conversation a few weeks ago. Do they anticipate it just less need? And you know, I, again, hopefully, it's obvious that we know that this is largely an unknown, depends on when kids come back and how many can come back and how many will choose to eat in our cafeterias. The rest of that in terms of school activities and textbooks, that's the fees, the return of those fees. So I have zeroed out really those budgets for the student fees in those areas, some of which I had already accounted for, but I took the rest out based on our refund and you know, it'll look, it'll look a little weird when you start seeing the revenue and expenditure reports for this fiscal year. It'll show negatives in those areas because we technically collected those fees in May, in June, but you know, the orders will be able to make those adjustments, but you know, I'll let you know that as the year goes on. One thing that was an add was 100,000 for the CARES Act. Now that's something that's on our agenda at the regular board meeting, but we were made aware that the Lake County Board, the Lake County Government is using some of their money towards schools. Schools can get reimbursed, and so they're doing it on a per pupil basis, and District 128 can be eligible for, it's about 104,000-ish. So I put that in there as a revenue that we would anticipate except getting this fiscal year. So total revenues came down 1.5 million, but you know, that's, a lot of those things are things we talked about in depth, I think, at the last meeting. All right, on expenditure side, again, for the stipends, you know, we, it's largely unknown still right now, but what we, what I did based on what we talked about was take whatever I was projecting and just put it at 90% without, with knowing, like, there's still decisions to be made about that. There's a lot of unknowns we still have there. Vernon Hills, there was an addition to software in the finance department. You know, we originally had a number there for software, but once, once the actual numbers came in, they needed an additional allocation for their finance software to accomplish that in e-school. Special services had a very small change for $100. Food service was brought down relative corresponding to the revenue and COVID, I added 288,000 for a total, and I have a slide later on this, for a total of 500,000 right now for COVID. Right now, that's a contingency for some things that I'm not sure yet if we will need or what, but I'll talk about that later in the presentation. So in total, down 300,000. So you're good. So looking at all of the funds, all of the money in, all of the money out, you know, we try to look at operating for our, how are we actually running, but you still need to see all of the money in, all of the money out. So total revenues would be 90,600,000 and expenditures would be 106 million, which would be a deficit then of 16 million. Now that includes, you know, the, the rest for our major capital projects, so 12.23 million for those that are still going. But also, this is something that we didn't really talk a lot about last time, but you'd need to be aware is I have a placeholder in there for 4.5 million for a debt service fund clear out. So we've talked before about funding our big capital projects, and we have a fund balance in our debt service fund. And right now, we're still figuring out how to access that money. The, the cleanest way, if you will, is to issue short-term debt to, basically, you borrow money against that balance, put that money in your capital projects fund, and then pay off that debt in a short-term thing. So that may be something we would look at doing. Otherwise, that money is just going to sit there. And so there, or there might be other ways to do it, but for now, I, you know, and I guess you could say almost like that would be a worst-case scenario for us to be able to access those funds to offset that. So I had that placeholder in there for right now. And so 4.5 million of that is purely because that technically would be an expenditure, but the way it's a little tricky because the way the code is written, the proceeds from the bonds do, are not considered a revenue. They're considered an other source of funds, so they're not considered revenue, but the bond payment is considered an expenditure. So there's need to see that and be aware of that.
Dan, do you have, do you have a summary of essentially the operating revenues and expenditures then?
Well, that's a great question, Dr. Grudy.
Next slide, right? There we go.
So here's our operating funds. So looking at all of the changes that we've done, so really all the changes, like, it's the same numbers that you saw two weeks ago, plus the changes that I just mentioned. So revenues, oh dear, I forgot to put the, the titles on this. So revenue at 90,500,000, that's a 6.5% increase over last year's actual receipts, which there's a big asterisk. I didn't write it in here, but there's a big thing context to understand that I'm going to explain. And then expenditures is 89, 89,900,000, which would be a 4.9% increase, which is pretty close, not quite as high as it would have been otherwise. So that leaves us with a small surplus at this point of 650,000. And that is, that wraps up, you know, that takes into account our return of the fees, that takes into account the COVID budget that I have in there right now, that takes into account kind of everything. So that, you know, once everything is kind of mushed together, that's, that would be our operating, our operating budget and operating surplus this year, knowing there's many caveats in your head, right? Food service is weird, interest income is down, all that kind of stuff, but I'm going to work, I'm going to talk through some of those details. Next slide. Please. All right, our revenue assumptions. So again, a reminder of our high level of assumptions. So our 2019 levy, which was done back in 2019, that is built in there with some caveats. Our 2020 levy is in there with the 2.3 CPI. Our property tax timing is, is odd because of the 42.5% that we received in June. I'll show the slide next that will explain that. CPPRT is down, so that is money that we receive from the net proceeds of businesses in Illinois, and we're anticipating that to be down. We actually got our numbers, our anticipated numbers from the Illinois Department of Revenue, and we are at kind of where we were thinking we would be, which is the same levels that we were when we were in the Great Recession. So that, that is, that is holding true right now, and we'll see if we actually end up getting that money, but right now, that's the estimate. Interest income has a significant reduction. We talked about that. We've refunded the school fees. Food service has significantly reduced, an idea funding shift. So if you remember, all the money for the idea is coming to us now, and then we then send that, we pay that into tuition essentially towards CEDOL, and it's, it's not exactly a one-to-one because we took back that ELS program, which adds to our staffing, which will feed into our salary increase conversation in a second. So that's, that's just a reminder of what's going into our, those are kind of the big players, I would say, in terms of our revenue. Go to the next one. All right, so this is a similar chart to what you saw before, except I'm really just highlighting in yellow in the middle column there, those changes in the interest income, food service activities, textbooks, and local other. So this isn't really new information, but it can kind of show you what goes into the 6.5% increase. And the, the big thing that I would highlight is in one of the middle columns, property taxes, the 2020, the 5.7 million, that's negative, that's the 42% that we that, or that, that's the 42.5% that we got rather than the 51% we would have normally got, right? And so that's, that's playing a hugely significant role in why it looks like our revenues are going up 6.5%, but they're really, they're really not, they're really not, and if you look at it in a cruel method. But you can see the other, other methods of funding are pretty flat. State is down a bit because simply our, we're anticipating our transportation is going to be down because we had less transportation costs last year, and so then therefore there's less to reimburse. It's a reimbursement system. So federal money, you can see there, we have the increase based on the idea money that's reflected there. Now, so Brian, if you can go to the next one, this is where I have the, showing you that breakdown of the property tax timing. We've had a very weird few years, as you hopefully know and are aware of. In 2000, before 2017, we'd been clocking along pretty consistently at 51% of our taxes received in June. And 2017 was the year where people were able to prepay their taxes because of the change in the federal law. And then in 2018, we didn't get the 51, we only got 49%, which was something we had to explain last year. And then this year, the, with the county changing the collections so that you could delay 50% of your first installment, that resulted in us receiving that, along with a one slight change in one of the distribution dates, had it so that we didn't get the 51%, we got 42.5. And so that is then, that difference between, you know, that difference between that 42.5 and that 51% is now shifted into next fiscal year showing a really big increase in property taxes when that's really not the case. Because so Brian, if you can go back one, back to that revenue one real quick. So if you look at the budget comparison in that first green, that first green one there, the 1.7 million, what we really would anticipate is about a 2% increase in property taxes. So that's truly what I would say is, is, is the right thing in your mind to have for what's changing in our, in our Texas, or in our property taxes. So if you can see at the bottom under the change in, the change in actuals is 6.5, but the change in budget, which I think this year is a more accurate number to consider, our revenues are pretty flat. And we know some of that is intentional be, in, because of the the decision to return school fees, right? That's already allocated in there. But we talked last time that it was only about a 1% or something before we did that change. So overall revenues aren't, I would say, are not really increasing very much next year.
Again, one question on that. So, so the long and short of that is we didn't receive by the end of June some tax money we would normally receive, correct?
Correct.
And that then moved into the 2021 school year and the, and the 2021 budget.
Yes.
Okay, and how much is that? How much actually should, you know, did we think we would probably get in June, but we actually got it, say, later than June?
That's would be the 5.7 million that you see here.
Okay.
So you can call it 6 million to just keep it a little easier round number.
All right. So then if I back up to the previous slide from this one, which I think is the operating budget number, right? Two slides maybe. Okay.
Pat Grudy President.
Does that mean this revenue number would have been reduced by $6 million?
No.
Okay.
No, it, it doesn't. And that, that, and that, that was something we talked about at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get this straight. I guess at the end of the day, what I'm trying to, because that's just a pure timing thing. It's really not.
Correct.
It's just timing. So I'm trying to look at this slide in the context of that and say, okay, what, what is our true surplus or deficit?
This is your true.
That timing thing.
Yeah, that, so what we talked about last, last, last meeting was this is your true
Okay.
surplus because I have put in, I've put in the projections that this spring, we are also only going to get 42.5% of the taxes.
Okay.
Because I know exactly what's going to happen in the fall. I don't know what's going to happen in the spring for collections, and so I made the assumption to remove that variance from the equation.
Okay.
So had I put in 51%, you would have seen revenues even higher. But I, but yes, this is your true, I mean, true with the context of all of these changes amongst the COVID stuff, you know.
Pat Grudy President.
But in the spring, if you do get the full amount, essentially, we're going to have a significant surplus, but the reality is a lot of that surplus would be driven by the $6 million timing thing from the.
Correct. And in our actual financial reports that are audited, it'll, all of those will be adjusted for the proper timing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Bottom line, bottom line, all these ins and outs, the budget's pretty close to balanced.
Yeah, yeah, you, you have a, I would say you have a, you have a fine surplus this year, you know, even considering all of the intentional changes you get. And which, which is really what we thought would be happening, you know, three years ago. This, this is, this is in line with what we thought was going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the revenues. On the expenditure side, best records that I have is that we added, we ended up adding seven FTE. A big part of that was taking that ELS program back from CEDOL. So if we bring that back in-house, now you have to hire that staff, so you don't pay that tuition. Or how it actually ended up happening is our tuition didn't increase as much as it would have with CEDOL. Instead, we have the increase in the staffing to do that. And then we also, and you know, we talked about this back in the spring of the addition lead for the staffing and the special ed staffing outside of, outside of the ELS program. So that, that, that was a discuss long ago, but that is in there. The salary increases, so that, you know, the teachers and everything, when everything was said, all said and done, we placed everybody on the new salary schedule. You know, this is the year with our, our longer salary schedule, so we, we placed everybody and kind of took that into account, and so I've got that reflected there. We, and that was based on a three, about a 3.8 base increase, then we knew it was going to be about another half percent to place them. Because every time you have to place them on a new schedule, you have to make sure like no one essentially loses money, and there's always that little additional cost to get them to the next cell. So that, that's pretty much in line with what we anticipated there, but that also includes, you know, people in the retirement track and longevity as well. So that's kind of all the, all the existing people still here for next year. Does that make sense? That's not going to be the change in our, in our actual salaries. That's just the, the assumptions that's built into the salary numbers. ESP 12-month admin at a 3.8% increase, dental insurance at an average of 6.9. It was, this was probably one of the worst years we've had for medical insurance increases for a few years. Dental insurance at 4.5.2, I meant to say medical insurance before. So dental insurance at 5.2. And the 403B match is up from $500, matching for the year last year, up to $750. So, I mean, that would be a 50% increase, you know, if you're looking at it just from that scope. So that's built in, that goes into our expenditure assumptions. And then here is a really high-level view of of kind of our, our overall operating expenditures. So salaries are up 5.5%. That includes the additional FTE that we put in and the raises, right? So when I, and it includes the people who retired and all that kind of stuff. This includes all of that stuff. So that's up 5.5%. Medical and dental, when I kind of push everything together, that's at 4.5 right now. Purchase services is down, or well, so this is where I would have you look at the budget. It's down 560,000. That's because of a decrease in food service. It would be a pretty big increase over actuals because we had a lot of stuff that dropped off in the fall or in the spring, excuse me, because of the pandemic. So that I would, I would, the other ones down, I would reference you to the change in budget. So purchase services are down really because of the food service. Supplies are down in general on the budget side due to COVID-19 and not, not needing as many supplies under any school environment. Actually, no matter what method we have for school this year, it's there as well as the remote learning. Capital outlay is down a little bit, but that's really just a shift from, in the tech department, from capital to non-cap equipment. So it just kind of shifts those two different places. But if you recall from last time, we did bump up technology overall a little bit to around two, to a round number of 2 million, which was about a 70,000 or so increase to help accommodate some of our e-learning stuff that we were trying to accomplish. Other objects is up 588,000, which is a big deal, and that was, we talked about that a bit last, last meeting, that we're looking at a a a pretty big for us increase in the number of students that are outplaced in residential placements. And so that is, that's significant, and so that goes, that's where that gets paid from. Non-capital equipment is up a bit there. Primarily, that is the tech shift from the capital outlay. You know, and there's, there's 100 other numbers that are built into this. This is just kind of me trying to summarize the overall impact of what I see. So overall, operating funds, we are up 3.8 on the, on the budget side, which is largely driven by the salaries and benefits. And for about 5% increase on the actual side, which is, I don't think a super helpful number to compare to because of the spring, everything kind of shut down, and certainly saw our spending get affected by that. The next slide is.
Hey, Dan, I'll move, I'll move this.
Kevin Huber School Board.
Questions on the last slide. So you just want to refresh our memories for the record why salaries, the amount of salary decreases based upon unfortunate layoffs that we had to do and why that salary number isn't lower because of more layoffs, i.e. contractual requirements by what, 90% of the staff, if not more? Maybe 95?
Ask your question again, please.
Sure. So on the salary number, the potential expectation could be that we could be cutting more salaries, more employees. So you just want to go on the record for why the salary number didn't, the decreases. You showed us the increases on the salary expense, but we also should have savings from salaries of which we did let go. How many, 30 net 28 employees were let go?
No, we, yeah, we did reduce the 35, I believe the 35, we used, we were able to have some of them be transferred to open positions that are, that we had available. But those 35 positions were, were reduced and additional 11 reduction hours. So one thing I have not updated in here is any account for that in the salaries. So right now I have all of that, and I know, I know that's not exactly what we talked about, but I just have not had a chance to make that change. Because right now, I'm not exactly sure what change to make. We're still kind of trying to talk through that, but that would be an additional change that I would still have to make here, that I would intend to account for in some way between now and.
Kevin Huber School Board.
Great. So, so salaries potentially, the budget for salaries could be coming down a little bit by those, the net employees that we had to let go for the time being.
Correct. And how much that is, we don't exactly know because we don't know how long they will be out, you know, so we'll just have to guess. Are they out for a few months, a quarter of the year? I don't know. So we'll just have to make an assumption, make sure you're aware of that assumption, and we'll let you know how it works out, right?
Yeah, no, I think, I think, I'm glad you said it because I think that goes into the second point, that is under purchase services. We know in 2020, the actual purchase services, in essence, we had some goofy stuff that happened in April and May, and that's why, you know, you have about a $1.5 million favorable variance there. Now, what are you budgeting for in purchase services? Because at a minimum, we're probably going to be out at least, at least the same amount of time, a couple of months, could be out more. So that purchase service number, again, it looks like we burned through a million a month on the 2020 adopted budget. If we increase that a little bit, but then we take into account, we're not going to be in school, of which a lot of purchase services, food. Again, I always use our favorite, the towel services, stuff like that, which is small, but again, stuff like that. Isn't that number, the 11.5, high?
It might, it very well could be a bit high. One of the thing that goes into that number is part of my COVID budget, which I'll explain at the end. So there's 200,000 in there. That is just for, essentially just for COVID purchase services, which I'll talk, I'll talk about a little bit later in that. But let me, if I looking at the rest of the details, you know, some of that, some of that reason that also was shifted was because the tech department had realigned some of their spending. So there is a decrease in the tech department software, but there's a, a pretty corresponding increase to their purchase services. So they had stuff that, so like, so, so that, that is really just a shift, I would say on the tech side, because that, I mean, that alone accounts for about probably a few hundred thousand dollars change on just the purchase service size. But looking at other stuff that would go down, like purchase, like, for instance, professional learning, professional learning is down, and I'll, I'll show you this on the next slide. It has a few of these details here. Some of those things are down, but if I'm looking at this list, actually, Brian, why don't you go to the, can you go to the next slide? I think this will help at least a little bit. So some of the big changes in purchase services, so purchase services would start, basically, it would be those first one, two, three, four, five lines. So those five lines are a big chunk of, of those purchase services, like the chain, I was, I meant to highlight these for just what changed in the budget. And so trip, pupil transportation, for example, that we're anticipating being down because of field trips, but the other transportation, we don't actually know, you know, because we're trying to, even today, we were talking and trying to figure out, you know, if we looked at bringing in kids in, how can we do that? That idea, we may run less routes than we had before, but we may run them more frequently to go pick up kids throughout the day. So we don't really know yet what's going to happen, but transportation could be overstated, but we don't really know until, until we get a little bit further along in planning. Another one certainly could be some of the professional services for the food service even, like, that could still be high for all, I know, to be honest. Some of the, so the, this is a little, this is a little difficult to be able to project, but we're trying to do this based on a set of assumptions that, as long as you know what are in these assumptions that we can try to compare to, you know. But is the 11.5 high? The 11.5 could be high depending on what happens. So like pupil transportation, like, we have that in there to spend, but I mean, it, it, it could be less as just looking at that one as a specific example.
Pat Grudy President.
Dan, I agree with you. I mean, we don't know on a lot of these things. So the key thing is just to make sure we understand the assumptions in the budget. So even going back the one slide on the, on the salary number, I think we should just clarify this documentation to make sure that it, it's clear that that salary line does not include the impact of, of the personnel reductions, right? Because somebody could pick this up and say, hey, you let these people go and you're still spending more on salary. So.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know, I don't know that, um, that my adjustments to that would have a pretty material impact to this number.
No, yeah, it may not, but, but what you said, and I understand, is you said that this, this document doesn't reflect any changes resulting from that, correct?
From that, yeah, correct.
Yeah, we know we did it. So I'm okay with it stated that way, as long as there's on that line. Go back one slide, please. All right. So where it says add FTE and raises, in parentheses, we should say excludes impact of staff reductions, just so it's perfectly clear to anybody that reads it. You know what I mean? And then on the other things, things like the food service, same thing, we should just kind of document here somewhere. Our food service decrease, what is that? Is that assuming we don't come back until second semester, or what did you assume there?
Largely, that was based on what we talked about last year, was that. Uh, largely that was based on what we talked about last year was that, um. You know, we, so if I looked at food service.
And, and again, there's no right or wrong answer. There just is an answer, whatever it is, it is, and that's fine.
Yeah, um, I don't remember that number specifically, but let me find it.
Yeah, and it's okay, because the, the more we can document that, when the numbers are different, which they will be, we'll at least be able to understand if they're. You know, what's driving those differences, whether it's just a timing assumption or whether or not, you know, something was twice as expensive as we thought it was going to be.
Damn, we're.
To your point, this is going to be very confusing all year.
Oh, we're just going to have to update as we go along. And Dan, we're able to put notes on the budget, right? So like we can have a note, one, two, three.
No, no, it would just have to be part of a, a cover memo that's included.
Okay. But it's fine, as long as it's even in this presentation, we can always refer back to this. I just want to be able to point back to it if we ever have to, if anybody has a question on it. So, I mean, overall, it's good. The one big picture concern I have, and I think we talked about this the other day. You know, it looks like, and I agree, the budget to budget comparison is the better one here because the actuals were all messed up with what happened in, in the spring. But even at a three point eight percent increase, that's obviously. You know, call it one and a half plus times whatever our inflation rate is, right? We know that. But it's also got a lot of favorability in there. And if we took the fa- the, call it COVID caused favorability. Um, in purchase services and capital allies and all these other things, we'd be at more like, I think, uh, four point six percent. So. You know, the big picture concern, which is not an issue for tonight, it's an issue going forward, is that's probably a trend that we've got to work on because. We're not going to be able to overspend inflation by two X every year. We know that.
Correct. And you know, we've talked about this several times.
I know, and I'm just kind of doing it because I know this is being recorded, but I mean, at some point, even in cases where our salaries are significantly increasing the, the rate of inflation, we're going to have to figure out how to. How to find that money somewhere, you know?
Correct. Unfortunately, it's worked out, you know, so far.
Right.
Um, but all else being equal mathematically, you'll eventually run into a problem. Thankfully, we're not there yet. And our, uh, my, my goal would love to be to keep. Um, not letting us run into that, helping us to not run into that situation.
And I don't mean to discuss it tonight because it's not really something we need to discuss tonight. It just, we all got to keep on our radar screen that it. It's a trend, we gotta hear out how to problem solve, certainly over the next couple of years. Okay.
Hey, Dan, final, final comment on this, and I, I think it may be helpful because I think you've already. Talked about the, a little bit of magnitude, but maybe not all the dollar amounts. We have a COVID contingency in there. I'm sure we spent a heck of a lot of money already from June thirtieth on for COVID stuff at the buildings, whether it's. PPE, whether it's the temperature things, whether it's all of that stuff. So while we do. Our, our expenses aren't necessarily lower because of some things we don't spend because kids or people aren't in the building. Certainly we have budgetary expenses for COVID that may. May offset a significant portion of that. So, I mean, how, how do we know what portion of this, what is it eighty? Almost ninety million of operating expenses. Do you got a million of COVID expenses? Including the contingency in there, one point five million, five hundred K? Well, what is that number?
Oh, I mean, if you're just the COVID stuff, I mean, no, I, I, we've been accounting for COVID stuff pretty specifically. But, but, and this is a, a helpful point that, that I was going to get to at the end, um, after I get to, after I go through the COVID stuff, as you know, that. Uh, we, what we talked about last time is a comparison to like, you know, what, how has COVID impacted our budget for this year? And, and essentially what I told you then is the same thing I'll tell you now is very hard to do because you essentially have to start with. What would our budget be in a normal year? And then revise it to there, whereas I never started with that. I started with. What is our, what is our actual year looking like, you know? Um, so, uh, you know, I, I plan on having something for you at the next meeting.
Okay.
But I wasn't able to have that for tonight to show like. I, I don't know, the buildings instead of being down five percent, they would have been up two percent or something like that. And what that number is. I, I couldn't tell you right now, but I intend to have that for you at the next one. And so just for example, the, so I wanted to bring up the food service. So the food service, what we discussed last time is so. We've been clicking at about one point three million for food service pretty closely. Last year we had one point one million and that was with the shutdown. In March. So we, we really lost two months because we're done about mid May. So we, we really lost about two months for the food service. That would be that difference between the one point one and the one point three million. Um, so I started at a million last time. Um, because I was comparing down from the one point three million, you know, saying. Say we start later and we don't get kids in really through the first quarter. But as we discussed it, we discussed one, there's probably going to be less kids. Eating anyways, because we were talking that we would need to encourage people to bring their own lunches. Uh, the food service we did offer would have to be very prepackaged. It couldn't be kind of a fancy, really pretty, cool thing. Um, it would have to be very basic, very controlled, very packaged, prepackaged and like that. So there would be less in general. So. What we ended up deciding was starting from. That million or the one point one million last year and then reducing from there. So I, I just took a guess and knocked off four hundred thousand. But it's truly a guess and, and it, and that number in and of itself doesn't totally matter because it's a, it's a revenue offset. So I changed one number. I changed the other number along with it, but that's what went into, for example, the food service number. Okay? Alright BK, we're almost done. So a few bigger changes. So what I usually try to do is highlight for you bigger changes up or down that I think is helpful for you to be aware of. Uh, so professional services is down because of that food service. Professional learning is down a hundred thousand really for COVID nineteen. We still fully anticipate having professional learning, but the travel component, we don't anticipate being there. So. Any flights or hotel or anything like that, we don't anticipate that being there. So that's getting reflected there. Uh, repair and maintenance, um. Where we've had, we had less preparers this past spring. And if there aren't, you know, thousands of people in the building every single day. Um, that we're anticipating that that would probably continue a bit. Uh, so that's been reflected there. Pupil transportation is down largely because of field trips. Right now, we're anticipating that we wouldn't be doing any field trips, no matter what this year. Um. Insurance, our property casualty liability insurance is down ninety one thousand. That's just because it's lower. Which we have great experience. We've been very, we are very, very fortunate. Um, that we've not had this kind of staff injuries or that we've had, you know, any kind of significant losses physically. Uh, or liability wise has been, uh, pretty outstanding. And so our premiums are reflective of that in our co-op that we're in and click.
Alright, don't, don't move off from that one though. So how is our actual seventy point, insurance companies? How's our actual seventy thousand there? And then our budget was four thirty nine and then our new budget's four or three forty eight.
Yep, good question. So we talked about this in the last meeting as well. So, um, we have always paid our. We have always paid our premiums in June. Which are for really the next year. So we have always essentially prepaid for our premiums. And to be honest, that has been, uh. Uh, annoying is the word that comes to mind, uh, accounting wise, because it's always something that we have to adjust and account for. And. I'd have to budget for something that I won't know what the premiums are until next March. Or May even, like I won't know what they are, but, but that's for a future year anyways. And so. With everything, what we've now been able to do is align. So now the premiums that we are paying that we paid in July. For our insurance is for this year and it'll match up really perfectly. And we'll be able to budget like to the dollar. Exactly what we need to, so there's no, really no more guessing game needed in terms of budgeting for this. So. No risk of, I think, budgeting too high or too low. Um, so that's why there's a big change in the, in the actuals that looks really weird. For sure. Um, so that's the answer to that. Is that helpful or is that? Is there more, is there more?
No, that's good. Thanks.
Okay. Alright, um, general supplies is down pretty substantially. Um, that is true, truly, I mean, look, me looking at all the numbers, it truly is. Uh, COVID, COVID related that we're, we're just not, uh, experiencing those kind of supplies, um, really from. Not only just from starting in E, E school, but really for the whole year, even if we do. Bring everybody back tomorrow, we would still anticipate that this would be down due to a variety of, a ri- a variety of circumstances. Uh, textbooks is up a hundred and seventy three thousand. Uh, that's, that's a big change. So that's, that's part of our new adoptions that we have. But also renewals, there's some, you know, pricier renewals that came around this time for textbooks. So that is up. Uh, library books is down, physical library books that was lowered because of. Uh, the COVID nineteen and not really starting in person. Um, electricity is up. That's really for the additional square footage that we're going to need to provide electricity for. Uh, and that, and to be honest, that I actually might be even a little low. So I might need to adjust that again, uh, for next time. Software is, is just down a little bit, but that's really, all that really is, is just a shift from tech into that purchase service that I mentioned. Um, capital outlay is again really due to just a tech shift. So. I tried to show you the departments which we looked at last time and this because it shows you the numbers slightly different ways. So you can see. Different things happening, uh, in our finances. Uh, dues and fees is down, uh, really because of COVID. There's a PE unit. Uh, that can't do what it, you normally would do. And so that's offset there. Tuition, which we talked about for the, um, the special services, residential placements, that's, that's reflective in tuition. Uh, there that it also probably is reflective of the additional increase in tuition. For seat all, but it's not, but that number, that tuition number would have been significantly higher if we had kept the ELS class in seat all. Um, but because we pulled that out, we didn't experience that, that bigger increase there. Um, and then other was just, uh, that, that there's a, a bunch of little things that go into other that is, that's been reduced because of COVID. And then the non cap equipment is really just a shift in tech. Um, shifting between services and supplies and all that kind of stuff. Um, so those are really, I would say the, the big changes. Um, that I saw in, in the numbers that we have. Questions there? Alright. So the COVID, so right now essentially what I have placed in there is half a million dollars for COVID stuff, you know, some districts are. Using very precise numbers, some use districts are using very, very round numbers. I'm somewhere in the middle. Um, so we have already incurred a hundred and eighty four thousand. This fiscal year, we, we incurred probably another, Mark, I don't know, maybe a hu- a hundred thousand last year, maybe. Because we bought the, we got the wipes and we got masks and stuff like that. So maybe it wasn't quite a hundred, but it was definitely closer to ninety thousand. But that was last fiscal year. This fiscal year includes a hundred and eighty four thousand. So. Um, the capital outlays for our thermal scanners, we have the five thermal scanners, they're in place. Right now, running. And so we are ready, you know, uh, people are using them as they come into buildings now. Excuse me, uh, supplies, that's a lot of the PPE, the masks, um, some additional wipes, uh, hands free dispensers. Um, what's the word? Uh, hand sanitizer stuff. Um, so, and there's more that we're still looking to acquire and everything like that, but that's not been, uh, encumbered yet really. Cause we haven't exactly found it or gotten it yet. Um, and then purchase services. Uh, is a big question mark. And so my placeholder there is really for two things. But I'm aware, well, three things I should say that I'm aware of. One is. You know, if we're looking at bringing people back, like, do we have to have, do we have to do tents? And so if we did tents, would we be renting them? So, you know, we have that provision there for that, um, based on just some of the numbers we've looked at for ten, for tents, but also. Um, we've talked about if there's a need for medical consulting. Um, in our planning and everything like that. And then the third thing would be testing. If we talked about, you know, coming up with some type of agreement to. Uh, work out testing for our, our staff and our, our people, make, make that available. Um, not sure what that would cost, to be honest, but there's at least something in there right now. Uh, and we, we can change that. We can do whatever we want with that really, but I, that's where I started with. Um, and knowing like there were, you know, we're ordering more PPE stuff all the time. And, uh, want to make sure we're ready with stuff. So that's what I have with the COVID and it's not COVID one, it's COVID nineteen. And I'm sorry, I missed the nine. There. So the next steps would be answer any questions that you have. Um, and we would be looking to adopt this on September fourteenth. So that would normally be a committee meeting, but. We talked about having this be a special board meeting to get that adopted.
And so you will add the reduced salary expense for, uh, the currently flirt. The, the currently furloughed, uh, support staff students in the budget that the board will adopt, correct?
I'll have some number in there. I'm not exactly sure what number I'll have in there yet, um, but I, I don't. I don't, I, yeah, I'll have some number in there. Yes.
Yeah. And, and again, Dan, don't worry too much about it. Just make sure the, we know the assumption tied to the number because to your point, we don't know when we're bringing those people back.
Correct. Yeah. I mean, the, the optimist in me says like, no, I'm not going to reduce at all. Like, we're going to, we're going to figure out something, you know, I mean, and we're going to, we're going to get this all to work. You know, I, I, but then I, I, then I can see the other side saying like, nah, we're just going to assume like none of it comes back. Like I. I don't want to believe that either. So that, that's kind of the struggle, which I know a lot of you understand that too. Uh, so. That's, I think, the balance. So it's, I guess, what you said, picking a number and then making sure you understand what that number is.
Correct.
And then we'll let you know what actually happens.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, Pat is Kevin. No, I, this is just actually, this is more of a, and maybe I dreamt this, but. Did, did we have a discussion weaving the board or s- I don't know, somewhere along the lines that. If somehow testing does become more reasonable and. A better vehicle that the board may consider picking up some of the costs of testing of our kids. Uh, did we have that discussion?
No.
Cause if so, we did not, okay. Cause I was gonna say, if so, we need to give Dan some direction on the budget because that two hundred grand. Clearly would be for purchase services clearly be really light. If, you know, at four thousand, four thousand students, you know, ten, ten bucks, ten bucks a test, that's what forty thousand around. At, if we, if we said we pay ten rounds, that's, you know, what, what four hundred, five hundred K, right?
Yeah, right. I, I think we can safely assume that the budget does not include any money for COVID testing.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess it depends on how expensive the tests are. Uh, it could be a hundred dollars a test, fifty dollars a test. You keep reading in the paper about ten dollars a test, but I think that's a fantasy, not, not reality. But let, let's just assume that. I mean, real, the reality is we don't have any money in our budget for COVID testing right now.
No, but, but maybe we talked about, you know, maybe we, part of that may be like. Working with some type of provider to get us access to the testing, you know?
Sure.
Um, and so that, that was in, kind of in my brain for that number, even without really knowing more details. So.
Yeah, but again, I think to Kevin's point, if, if we did, as we do. Think about coming back and if testing is part of that strategy, that testing is likely going to need to be something we're going to repeat on a regular. Yeah, relatively short term basis. I mean, I had actually, Kevin, I was just doing a calculation. I did one real quick at fifty bucks. If we tested monthly at fifty bucks per person, assuming around four thousand people in the district, that's almost two hundred thousand dollars a month.
Yeah, like two million, yeah, over ten, yeah, no.
Yeah.
It's fine. Dan, I think your number's great. And I just want to make sure that. We, we hadn't gone down that path yet to where you need a guidance to goose up that two hundred, uh, a, a bigger number. So we'll. Got to be a budget adjustment down the line if we need to.
Correct. I'd, I'd, I'd prefer to assume it's not in and we'll figure it out what if we get there.
Thanks.
And it's going to be one of many revisions to this budget probably. Okay, Dan, really good job. Any other questions? Okay, if not, um, we'll declare the hearing closed. Um, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, or any questions, comments?
If not. Oh, just thanks, Dan.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. Great job. Uh, roll call, please.
Um, Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael. Carmichael. Oh, are you mute? Oh, okay, there you are. Okay, you said I?
I.
Okay, got it. Rudy.
I.
Hessel.
I.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstead.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Alright, motion carries. Alright, uh, anybody?